Keep it up with any chat. Oh, it's live now.
We're live.
Mr. Take it back. She give me a power. Say everybody Nigerian, so tell us. This is our new first.
We're live. We're live.
We're live, yeah.
Take it back.
Take it back. Yes, take it back.
Yes.
Are we to Erika? From the car? Oh. No. Oh.
It says also like four times.
Yeah, one or four times.
Wow.
This more. Because if you add all the terrorists.
If you're joining in, they're not tuning in. We are live and direct at the first airport in the city. Where we have been in our midst right now, the man.
You didn't go to the Australian?
The man and the man and only the one and only. The man full of inspiration and motivation speaker. He's had it. This man has been on this struggle for thirty years now. He's been on this struggle.
Thirty years next year.
Thirty years. And that's to me, it's what you call genuine. That's genuine, it's what you call persistency. That to me is what you call consistency. So when you have a mindful fact, because it matters how long it takes. Except that. This is what I want to get to understand. We want somebody who's got the force in their heart. Take of genuine.
Welcome to Perth.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to Perth.
Thank you, thank you. Have a good time there.
Hey, how was your...
Very good.
How was your trip?
Fine, now.
Slow down, so I can take a picture.
Yes. About it takes a while to be at the place.
Oh, we can just get it. You can also get it from going up the local.
Yeah.
I didn't actually have enough here. Here, have it. All right.
Can I help you?
I'm parked that way. Yes. It's that, daddy.
Good show.
Yes. Nigeria is better. Nice share.
Yes. And they are so excited, they want to go home. But they see all the holly bush talk.
Yes.
My daughter was in the cabin. How we must talk about our youth.
Oh my God. Yeah. First loud.
You gotta see all those... What else is there? Okay, there, you know. I see them from music.
It's scared now. You know? Scared now. At least it's warm out here.
Yeah, it's warm house. I know my way here. Looks like they do that weather.
Right in time where he goes, he just wanted to like take that photo.
Oh. I've done the reverse camera. How do I?
Oh. Is it in your face now?
Yes.
It just, it just goes.
Let's get off the place.
Yeah. Simple as this.
Oh, interesting. Here we go. Welcome to Perth.
Yeah, I know. Probably, it's okay.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you so much.
Mr. President. So then you question to me. We, 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 we want to cast.
That's it, right. That's right.
If he wants to ask something right, that's it. You don't fucking infrastructure.
I don't watch it now.
Please die for that. You come drive me. I want to vote anybody.
All right.
We go this way and do this. As you let me. This way, this way, I park here. Where do you find love?
Well, down on that side.
So we're going to freeze that.
So we'll ask. So. So.
Yeah, I just saw this, thank you. I like walking my far, uh, I view us through the streets of, uh, everywhere I go.
Oh, I see. Now I just wanted to find out now what you wanted to do. Do you want to go straight to the hall?
Ah, yeah.
Want to be there by two o'clock?
Yeah, that will be. Maybe we should go.
Running out of time, we should probably.
What time is the event?
Two o'clock.
Oh, event is two o'clock?
Four o'clock is start, isn't it? Yeah. You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
My, my brother, he met you when you went to, um, Edustin.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. TBC.
Oh, great, great, great.
Like AK, the ocean, they call him.
Ah.
Met with you one on one.
We're going back there. We're going back to Edustin.
Yes.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, you're welcome to Perth with us. Uh, we just landed in the city of Perth. It's, uh, one of Australia's extreme western city. Uh.
That's right.
So this is, uh, our point of departure after tonight's, uh, event in Perth. That's the town hall meeting. Thank you guys so much. If you are in, uh, if you're in Brisbane, you're proud of yourself for hosting us so well. If you're in, if you're there in Melbourne, thank you so much. Bode Musa. Uh, thank you Benjamin in Sydney. Thank you guys a lot. Now in Perth, Australia. Uh, this is the last city of our four city tour. For taking back in Australia. And it's been amazing, 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 you know? And it's, and it's part of the world. Just finding out a lot of people, a lot of Nigerians can't wait to take their country back. Whatever they might, you know? It's interesting, uh, the people who are most, uh, who are most, who are working so hard about this. I think who are themselves very convenient and living a good life in another part of the world. But they want a country of their own and, uh, we're here together. Let me say, let me say hello to our host here. Say hello to everyone, sir.
Ask me Wesley.
Wesley.
Um, I'm the one in charge of the logistic for the, uh, next president to be.
Wow.
And we're very excited, the Nigerians in Perth, Western Australia, the Nigerians in Australia, the Nigerians all over the world. We really thank you for this wonderful opportunity to be able to see somebody of his type, of his kind to come out and show us love that we Nigerians live in this area. That it is what it takes for us to support this movement. Support this movement, we know. A lot of things have been taken from us.
Yeah.
We don't need those things. This life is gone, but we need them back.
That's right.
It's time for us to take this country back.
Take it back, yes.
We need to take a lot of things back. Please, I'm begging you, everyone, support this man, support him, Nigerians, our youth. We need fresh blood, man.
Yeah.
I keep telling everyone in my video program, in my video, uh, whatever video that I come up with that. Let me tell you, just the way you replace your old product in your fridge, if they're not good. What is the reason why you throw away your bad stuff from the fridge? Because you want to restore new stuff.
Yes, yes.
That is what we want to do now. We want to throw all those bad eggs away and bring in a new one.
Fresh ideas.
Thank you so much, everyone. We'll be coming up more live videos for you guys.
And you have here my lovely, lovely, lovely new friend, Felicia. Thank you so much. Take it back.
Say take it back. What do you have to say?
Yes. What do you have to say? Not a lot, right?
Say something.
He's just, he's just very happy.
Say something to the Nigerians. They look, they looking at you right now.
Yeah.
How happy are you to receive the president to be?
Good, very happy. Very, 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 one million times happy.
Ah, that's good. Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you, people, that's Felicia. She brought a flower to the airport and, uh, we're excited to be here with her. So, uh, I think, are we set to leave now?
All right. Okay.
Okay, so we will drive you through the city of Perth. That's right. That's what we do wherever we get to.
Just leaving the Perth airport now?
We're leaving the airport area. And, uh, this is what, uh, other looks like everywhere we go. It's, you know, it's a very beautiful city. I can tell already, even though I've only been here for a few minutes. And, um, well organized, uh, people here, uh, really cool place. We enjoyed Sydney very well yesterday, very much yesterday. And, uh, we're here again to see Perth and to meet with Nigerians and the diaspora over here. And we are glad that, uh, whenever we're up doing this, you're, you know, you're traveling with us as well. See us and take it back us all over the world, you know, um. So we can just say hello to some of our people. Angela, uh, Oriaki. Angela, lead broadcaster on Facebook Live. Thank you. It's good to see you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yes. Andrew, Yemi Obadu. First was Ozazwa. This Fred Buna, Michael. Uh, Angela, take it back. Yes. So wherever you may be, uh, what time is it over here? It's twelve fifty seven PM in Perth. So wherever you may be, you can give us what time it is and which city you are. So that we can greet you appropriately.
At the end of the world.
Yes. Well, it's the beginning of the world, actually. I love it here.
It's lovely.
It's very nice.
Lovely here. So as we're heading out of the, uh, Perth airport right now, look up to the southeast part of the town. That's up in the hills.
Yeah. Wow. Look at these hills. Look at this beautiful hills.
Up in the hills, um, and that's pretty side of international airport. Yes, we're just living there now.
Wow. That's, 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 you know, this hillside.
They're just doing railway construction, linking the rail line to the airport.
Wow. They're doing new railway construction here.
So it's, uh, you know, construction, road construction.
They're always doing something here, all the time.
And this is the thing, this is the thing, this is why they tax us. You see where your taxes is going.
It's going, yeah.
So you are not upset, but that's the thing that I don't understand with Nigerian system. People wants to pay tax, but the system is so cut itself for them.
To pay tax.
To pay tax. So if they pay us and see where their money is going, then it's good.
Yeah.
But when you're taking money from people and you're not giving them something in return, man, that's upsetting.
Incoming call if, uh, if it's a person of interest.
I see.
Okay. All disconnect there. All right. Tolu Timmy, it's a powerful president, love you. It's five AM here in the Battle City. Uh, Oluwatoyo Yewole. Prince Hadi Akendi says eight fifty six AM from Abu Dhabi. Samuel Dada is five fifty five AM in Italy. Femi Olawoshe, we come. Good morning to you. Uh, take it back Emmanuel Norum says it's eight fifty six AM in Dubai. Daniel Daniels, morning, watching from, uh, house through home. China is, uh, twelve fifty seven, says AAC precious, thank you. So a lot of people are tuning in and greeting us from all over the world.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Femi Olawoshe because that is twelve fifty seven AM in New York City, I guess. Uh, Jumo Peter is also in New York, twelve fifty six AM. Little bit of, uh, one minute difference there. Sunday morning, New York, Pious Thomas. Oh, there's a lot of New Yorkers this morning. Joy, he pay my no sah. It's, uh... Yeah, it's, uh, a lot of people watching from all over the world. It's twelve fifty seven AM in Boston. Uh, that's what, uh, Reiki is saying. Aspen George, morning to you, my lovely president. Thank you. Arike Alice Dada, I say five five AM morning in Italy. In Italy right now is five. And, uh, China is twelve fifty seven PM.
Wow.
Yeah. I love this. He said ten fifty seven Calgary. Shee Adebango is, uh, eleven fifty seven PM in Houston. But say, see the boy, good morning. So my indefatigable hurricane president, that's from Balis.
That's good.
Seven fifty eight AM in Qatar. Yeah. Rita Iduse, shout out from Germany. What time is it over there? Tell us.
That's it.
Yes. Larry Olabody. It's five fifty eight AM in Paris. So watching from UK is four fifty eight AM in the UK. Uh, that's amazing. Keep all the good work from Adedegi. Uh, Diya Bolorunde, Minnesota is where you are. I'm coming from, I'm coming to Minnesota soon, so be on standby. Joseph Emmanuel Samuel Dada, thank you so much. Ayogundimu, wow, good morning. Alorunshade Dabimlari says nine fifty eight PM in California.
Wow.
California.
Wow.
Wow. The world is such a huge place and Nigerians are neat everywhere.
That's it.
Yeah. So what is it they can't share? I don't know why you can't share. I think maybe it has to do with our network here. Six AM in Abuja. Six AM in Abuja.
Yes, it should be.
Yeah.
Seven hours away, seven hours ahead of them.
Mm-hmm. Good, good. So I'm watching from Israel. What time is it in Israel? It's one AM in Boston. Uh, five fifty nine AM in Sweden. Dublin is four fifty nine AM. Amazing. Thank you. Agab News. This five, this serial is like, it's saying it's five fifty nine AM in Italy.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Abu Dhabi is nine AM. Aviola Joseph says it's eight AM in Russia. I was about to ask if there's anybody in Russia.
In Russia?
Wow. You guys are all over the place.
That's it.
Yeah, yeah. Expecting you soon. Yes, I'll be coming. I'll be coming to your part of the world soon. It's amazing, amazing this morning, uh, this afternoon here in, uh, here in, um...
Perth, Western Australia.
Western Australia. That's where we are. Beautiful, beautiful city of Perth.
This is Great Eastern Highway.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, this takes us to the, all the four corners of the town.
I know.
And I was following you on your Melbourne life. And I see how you were walking around, going to the U.S. So you love your water.
Yeah.
So looking meditating. So I have chosen a nice spot to take you to and walk around.
That would be great. We can go near a lake or somewhere.
Yes, a lake where you can see something.
That would be fantastic.
This is the Swan River.
Ah.
Cuts it off. I was here over there, but you get to see it.
We're gonna see it better when we, when we're done.
Very close to your hotel, actually.
Fantastic. So I'm going to my hotel now in Perth, uh, so I can relax a little bit before we start our town hall meeting. So we start at two.
Two, two thirty PM.
Two thirty PM. So if you're in Perth, Nigerians, come out and mass. Come join us.
Time to come and ask questions.
Take our country back.
This man does not run away from question.
No, never.
Unlike the rest.
Yeah.
They run.
Six o'clock in Italy right now, they're saying, yeah, thank you. In Roma, Italy, it's six AM. We've got a lot of people watching from all over the world.
Hmm.
All over, all over the world. Manuel Smits, good morning. Agab News, it said six AM. Samuel Dada, Joyce Daniel, Switzerland is where you're at.
Wow.
Uh, so zero normal. Where are you this morning? Tell us. Five AM in the UK, Linda Bohan, Larry Olabody, AAC for life.
That's it.
That's it. Take it back, people.
AAC for life.
Yes. Ayogundimu, yes. Looking forward to a town hall meeting here. Thank you, Y O. Yes. AAC all the way. Hope for Nigeria, that's right. Deliverance and revolution for Nigeria as well.
That's it, man.
That's it.
We're tired of that, man. We need deliverance. We need revolu...
Really revolutionary.
Revolutionary movement. Not, not bullshit, but something that's clean.
Yeah.
Crisp, you know? Crisp revolution.
Something clean and fast, you know?
Fast.
Yeah. Sogica, you know?
We are blessed with, with everything, man.
Yeah.
We can't be letting, we can't let it go all the time.
Good morning from Germany. They said, you know, we love you too. Aminet Lawrence. Uh, take you back action for life, man. Victoria Odusi Banjo, thank you. Najah Wash, love you too here. AC for life, no going back. That's right. Felix Engineer says, he's in Germany. Uh, so AC is not just a political party, it's a revolutionary movement. It is. It's, yeah, the revolution is possible to happen. It will happen in our lifetime too. So thank you. Shodima Deshino, Michael, take it back to you. Joy Emmanuel Lugo. Emmanuel Norum, New Nigeria is possible. That's true. A new, brand new Nigeria is possible.
That's it.
And it's about to be delivered to you. You just have to believe, have faith and you'll receive it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You have to have faith, you'll receive it.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone that came today's. You know, I just really thank you all for this, this support.
Yeah.
It's massive and, uh...
It's amazing.
It's amazing. Please don't give up in the struggle. We need to support this guy. Listen, Obama did this. Obama, when he first ran, he never had a cent.
Not, no, yeah.
People believed in him.
Yeah.
And he supported him.
And America was better for it.
America needed that.
Yeah.
But they did it and he became, and he ruled for eight years, somebody you never thought.
Yeah.
So let's not give up. We need to change our attitude.
Yeah.
Because I always tell you people, little Patrick said, you can't, you can't make somebody independent if you don't have them grow.
Yeah, that's right.
You understand? So we need to make this guy grow for us to be independent of what we do. We're living so much. That's right. The movement must grow.
Yeah.
Time has come for the movement to grow.
That we can have our real independence for the first time.
I asked them yesterday in my video, I said, Nigerians, how would you compare your living right now and the way you've been living in last four years?
Wow.
How do you compare, compare and contrast? Ask yourself. Ask your teacher. Ask your mom. Ask your sister. Ask your mechanic.
Yeah.
How is it living now compared to four years ago?
How they even survive?
How you people surviving?
That's what, that's the part I don't understand. How Nigerians are able to cope with their living? Nothing. Nothing.
That's the crown.
Okay.
Casino. Wow. One of the biggest one, yeah.
So I think that's downtown. The CBD is down there.
The CBD just around it.
Yeah. CBD central business district around here. It's a nice park out here.
Nice park in Victoria Park out there. And they're just coming to summer here. I think the rest of the world, they're in winter and they're just embracing winter now.
Yeah, so you guys...
When we are the only countries in the world.
You guys are always like opposite of the rest of the world.
We are always opposite the rest of the world. So the rest of the world are experienced, they're just embracing winter now. Australia is about to hit summer.
Yeah. Perth in particular.
Perth in particular. What a beautiful day.
Yeah.
What a beautiful day.
Look at the skies, beautiful skies.
Beautiful skies, man.
Blue skies today. Yeah.
It's amazing. It's amazing.
Thank you. Everything is working.
Working with our system work. And we have the same thing.
We have the same opportunity.
Self-discipline.
Yeah. It's leadership, man.
It's leadership, man.
Put the right leaders in place, they'll make your rules look like this. They'll have traffic lights too. You have train in the city, you know? You have well-managed parks.
Look at it.
You have flyovers. You have pathways for bicycles and walkways.
You walk safe.
Yeah.
You know?
This morning in Sydney, we went walking around.
You go.
It's beautiful.
You don't have to worry about somebody.
Oh my God. Look at that river here.
Yeah.
Is that a river?
That's the Swan River, yeah.
Yeah? Wow. This is the Swan River, people. Beautiful, beautiful, I mean, and you know, what is lovely about it is that, you know, there's a walkway almost all around.
All over. All over.
Yeah.
Walkway all over.
You can walk beside this river for like as long as I think it is. And there's a park beside it. Perth City.
Here we are.
Yeah. So that was a four hours, fifteen minutes flight.
Flight from Sydney here.
From Sydney. Wow. This is still part of Swan River.
You're part of it. And you look at this side again, from this side?
Yeah.
You see it on this side again?
Yeah, yeah.
Beautiful field on the Sisso. And that's the new Perth Stadium right there.
Oh, wow.
I'll take you on a tour tomorrow anyway.
Yeah. Plenty of time to do that tomorrow.
It's amazing.
Thank you guys for letting me take you on these trips with me. I really enjoy hanging out with you when I'm traveling around and just letting you see the rest of the world through my eyes. It's, it's, it's a great privilege and I appreciate it. You know, to know that when you hear from us, you wake up and come join and comment and, you know, give shout out to us and energize and ginger us. We really love that. Thank you so much. This is the city of Perth. Yeah. Yeah. So this is, this is, yeah?
This is my hotel right here.
Wow. Let's go into my hotel right now.
The city is downtown city.
Yeah. Let's watch.
Driving there. Watch out for that guy.
Scratch it. All right, guys. So we just reached our hotel now and, uh, this will be the end of the broadcast for now until we go to the town hall meeting later on where you join us. Thank you so much for joining and, uh, see you guys soon at the town hall meeting. It's twelve, two thirty PM.
It's two thirty PM.
Do you, do you want to give me the venue of the...
Uh, the venue is, uh, number sixty seven Riley Road.
Mm-hmm.
In Riveting. And the venue exactly is Riveting Leger Place.
Okay.
And that's where it's all happening. Come with all your families. Come with your friends.
Yeah, Perth. You know, if you have friends or families in Perth, call them now and let them come by two, two thirty.
Sovereign in your book, in your house, that...
That you're part of history.
Yeah. You be part of history, you seen the incoming president.
Federal Republic of Nigeria.
Republic of Nigeria. And it's amazing to have him around.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it's, uh, other guests. Thank you. And it's, uh, other guests, thank you.